But at any rate, so I thought let's just paint our history. And with that, three introduced rabbits back to downtown area. So the way of doing that, my idea was, was to paint a rabbit. And so I don't have artist's talents. So I, I approached Laura Newman, who's the art teacher, and called Jordan Matthews. And she breaks out of it in an endless spirit. She saw what I was talking about with that project. And she assigned her students, who shared the history on rabbits in Shattuck County first with the students. So they were like, why are we doing rabbits? It's because they have a history here in the county. So she assigned the students, or asked the students, and she's an artist. And to research that artist, and then to paint their rabbits in the style of that particular artist. And so what we've been doing over the last few months, have been taking those rabbits, and we've been placing them throughout downtown area. Because the idea was not just for rabbits, it was to encourage people to come to downtown area and seek out these rabbits. So I've got some pictures here. This one, I don't know if you can see it here tonight or not, that's Charlie's, something that Charlie's in the middle of doing. And another one. So they all look different, of course, based on your parts. And again, the idea was to promote the downtown area. And already, as I'm downtown a lot, so I walk in downtown. And I observe some people downtown, I've noticed the family walking streets. And the children, they were looking behind the pots. They were looking at some flowers, and I knew it was what they were doing. They were looking for a rabbit. Okay, and then I overheard some conversation. And the courtyard, the coffee shop today, and a couple ladies were there, and they were coming to shop. And they said, we surely hope we find a rabbit while we're downtown. And I'm like, I don't know if you're going to, because I think they've all been found right now. But anyway, again, the project that was encouraged of the downtown area, and based upon our history. So at this point, I'd like to show some of the pictures there, or photos of some of the students in their work. And you can see the diversity there of the rabbits. You look carefully, you'll see one is a Van Gogh, and you can't pick that one out. Okay, there's some others. Okay, Jenny and Art bought into the program as well. They put a QR code on the back. And with that QR code, they identified the students, and identified their artists. And they were, folks were asked to take their photograph and turn it in, so that it could be put on the Jenny and Art's page. Rose Tate here was kind of done and shipped to do, to work with that aspect of the project. So these are some of the folks that I've already found a rabbit. And him having been one of the lucky ones, I was down here at the city hall as well. So again, this is something that we, we want to continue doing. I think it's the slide there with all the rabbits as well. Yes. And yeah, I think that's most of them is right there. My idea is to continue the project, but hopefully expand on it, take advantage of our history. Those are some fiberglass rabbits that we done in another town. That would be nice if we could do something similar to that, placed on downtown streets. And parks and recreation can be, uh, in the all-in project. You do a five K button run. I just, my head goes off ideas, I don't want to school you, so that kind of leads. Anyway, I just wanted to share the ideas of this part with you. But I'd like, I'd hope to have a lot of students here to find the schools at. And so, uh, that's how the students that appear, they would come up. And they'd be like, yeah, who are? And which rabbit tours? Got a talk for you. I worked with some, some of the girls the other night in my skirt on the staff program. And I had encouraged them to come, and I think school being out and rides were a problem, so. Okay. Yeah, please, we'll see how it's going, please.
Oh, uh, my name is Charlie. Um, I made the, the all you found in the matches out, the yellow and red one.
This is she works, right? Okay. He's been in the, uh, what we've seen in the full lot.
Yeah. Uh, uh, that one is by the bar race. You're the chief store here. Um, I got inspired because of all the photographs and all of that. Um, that's what I think. Uh, I think that would be the way for you. And the fun part.
What's true?
I don't know, right?
The white rabbit.
Okay, that was some mixed up for his own delicate.
Um, my name is Giancarlo, and I did the bunny inspired by Van Gogh. I don't know if you've seen it, it's the ring folk. Yeah, I just really like, um, the ways he incorporates like the textures of painting and, um, the vibrant colors of scene. That's why I picked him.
They're very talented, and they've been great and master of sort of camp, I think, I share in doing this. Uh, they've bought into it, and the photos with their, with their, holding their work. I asked, uh, Ms. Newman, I said, did they want to keep their bunny? And she said, no, true artists share their work, so. So they were willing to share those, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Jim.
One of the things that I've talked to Ms. Jane about is figuring out how to, um, incorporate that into something that town can really get behind. Uh, Justin, I'd like you to meet with Ms. Jane. We talked about the back wedding run. Uh, Justin is under Parks and Rec Director, and just make this thing flourish and become a part of our community. The, uh, Main Street people really loved it when they came last week. So it is something that can catch on and catch fire. So thank you so much, and thank you guys for coming to students. All right. Now, I'm a resident of Sin by Tri River Waterhood Updates. What do you?
Yeah, day fourteen in time. Hey, Mr. Castle, uh, I'm here for, I don't know if you're that tired of the water, two twenty five, these weather, the whole period's stacked up there on. Uh, what goes on? The water was anchors, water pressure, capacity. Uh, Paul Weems, our technical director, uh, the utilities is here as well, if you want to talk about. So tangible things, but I'm here to focus on some of the
Asian suspects about this project. So this is a new project that we're trying to, um, really kind of get a hundred percent feedback from the residents in this neighborhood. You know, we do projects all over, we have water outages, we do that type of thing, and we try to communicate, try to be, you know, transparent. But this particular project will really need some folks to, uh, contact us, and we're reaching out to them. So it's a unique project, uh, from a communication standpoint, to make sure we try to get a hold of everybody. So we've broken it out into phases on how we want to try to accomplish that. First phase is just trying to send out an initial postcard, uh, try to get everybody's attention, try to drive them to the website. We'll put out some social media things through Tri River. I'm sure the Silver City folks will help share that and do some of those, uh, social media posts. Uh, and then phase two will be trying to get a little more in-depth of what the project is for folks, right? So I sent out a little more detailed letter on how you could pick up a pressure reducing valve for your resident. Um, those will be, what would say, pick up, like, kind of make, pick up, mail, drop off. We've kind of covered a bunch of different processes for different people. Uh, so the customer service center here, where we're going to have some supply, folks can come in, pick one up. When you pick one up, there'll be a letter, kind of describing what it is and what you need to do for the process. Um, if you can't pick one up through the hours of the customer service area, we'll mail one out, you'll call us. We can drop it off at your house, you know, it's pretty convenient from that standpoint. So we feel like there's multiple veins, kind of the first round, we try to hit some engagement and try to get, you know, see where we're at for the community and the engagement on what we get for, well, picking up their pressure reducer for this project. And once again, we'll do some more social media things. Uh, so that's about two things. Our first mailer is kind of what we're trying to think of. Uh, and these timeframes are just something that we put together to give us some an idea, you know. Hopefully, we get some turnout, and we get some engagement, and, you know, we move the project along. Um, for this kind of, we, that work out a little bit harder than I wanted to, but, you know. Kind of, we're kind of assess, see where we're at in phase two, phase three, we'll be able to send out another postcard mailer. Um, just to try to get some more folks to kind of get the process, social media, that type of thing. And then in phase four, we'll kind of determine where we're at. So maybe about a month after we kind of kick this thing off, kind of a, you know, sit back and see what we have, you know, we have about three hundred and thirty folks that are affected in this, in this neighborhood. Um, you know, we'll see where we're at. We're, we're a hundred, you know, we know we don't. Door hangers, do some things. If we haven't reached a whole lot of people, we need to kind of pivot on what we're doing. Uh, still may do door hangers, we have the electrical signboards we can put out. So we have some different things that we can try to do, but at the same time, we just kind of see where we're at, maybe after a month, four weeks in timeframe on how the communication's going. And then, throughout that process, you know, we're going to be putting in the valves that will help increase the pressure. So those will be going in as the same process. Those don't have to be tried or, you know, put into effect until we get the communication and the resident portion, um, worked out from that standpoint. And then kind of one of our final things that we'll do is, is maybe we turn it off, uh, turn the, and increase the pressure, we'll send out an emergency. So everybody kind of prior to get an emergency alert, uh, just as if there was a major event here in Silver City, on, we're going to increase that pressure in that area. Um, so maybe with that time, we get the last minute person that says, oh, hold on, and we can adjust and pivot from that standpoint, too. Um, so our timeframe will be probably, just to be quite frank and honest, um, but, you know, if we get a lot of engagement, and we get, everybody picks up some PR Vs and that type of thing, then, you know, the project could go pretty smoothly and pretty quick. Um, any questions to this point?
The customers have a ability to see their usage in real time, I mean, because the water is connected to essentially like online. Is that in real time?
Um, no, it's, it's currently not in real time. They're developing an app with the, um, transition from using our system to travel the system, they put a pause on making the app until they accomplish that.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you have an estimated time to finish this?
Well, so right now, we're just waiting, uh, some procurement to get the amount of pressure reducing valves that we need. So once that starts, which I think we're fairly close, maybe a couple weeks from that standpoint, uh, then we can start the communication aspect. Uh, and then, like I say, we're, you know, we're really, maybe a lot to see how we do. Uh, but, you know, it could, could take longer. We don't want to, we don't want to not have, you know, a hundred or so plus people not responded one way or another, whether you pick one up, whether he's only one, either way. Um, and, and increase the pressure, you know. So, um, you know, it's, a month is down, we're going to get in time, and then we'll kind of see where we're at after that month timeframe.
And if they're going beyond, like, what I think a lot of, we would do with, you gotta communicate with the customers in case they're not ready, just to help prevent leaks.
And as a sidebar, the group makes a peace win, uh, like the replacements downtown. We could have more mass notice of street closings and things of that nature. Because we, we, and we doesn't know about it. Uh, well enough, and that's time to let our citizens know. So in the future, we can look at that and make sure that Derek's gonna add with us.
Okay, yeah, we have a, um, one of the alert system that we utilize now, and, uh, one of the features of that is that you can send that out to everybody, like a an emergency list. So the fire department is one that we get in, in Sanford area. That way, if they have a, we have an outage of water and they have a fire, they at least know, you know, they might not have fire hydrants in that area. So maybe we're going to get that out through Jack of, um, you folks that are interested, maybe being on that list, we can push you on that critical, that critical list. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir. All right, four point three, Southern County Historical Association. Ms. Brooks, you come up and state your name and address, and we're ready.
Here's Brooks. Twenty five thirty three South Second Avenue extension, Southern City, you know what they're on. Uh, my presentation is more for those, uh, I think you have the materials in front of you. It's dealing with images that were made first nest storm and during the depression in, uh, there, I think there's six different photographs of downtown Silver City. The majority of them, as you can see, on, they listed as Fayetteville Street, which you will know as Chad Avenue. Uh, you can recognize some of them as the stones. But one of these lady deals, she went across mainly the southeast, southwest, south, and take these photographs. Her name is Dorothy Lang. And all of them are digital, so if you want to see more of them. This initially started out as a, uh, proposal that was going to be presented to, uh, to Pittsburgh. Because the fellow that, uh, had the majority of the images, he, he had gotten them downloaded and printed. Uh, some of you may have been looking for him, some of you may not. For the woodwork shop that was on TV television years ago. He relocated to Pittsburgh after retiring on television, has maintained a shop there. He found out that his building was included in these photographs, so he got that one, and then he proceeded on. Now, what is a word in progress, if you will, our concept that the Southern County Historical Association has taken on, being spirited by a fellow by the name of Jack Ritchie, is to reproduce these images and put them on a sign that is located so that you can look at the images it was taken, and then see what it is it looks like today. It may be a date, obviously, most of them are going to be a date, it won't have the same dates. And also have a, uh, what do you call those little pens? So that you can take a picture of it, and then the history of that building, when it was all, when that was taken. Uh, if given that this, I'm from my family's been here, I was born in nineteen fifty five, my family's been here over two hundred years when I was born. So Silver City taught me for a brief period of time, I was, I was in city state. But, uh, I wouldn't let any joke I'm glad Jane was talking about the giant rabbits, that is, Mr. Go stole in the back of the house. In, in, uh, Mr. Go but that is, that's located right near the train, that was located right near the train tracks. Uh, I would say, I think the smokestack is probably the, uh, you know, smokestack, which was the predecessor of Bonner Chalk. I'm not wrong, boy, with all his data. The lane that looks on the road. It's probably the method of Silver City town, I can't tell you who it is. But it's here. It's advertised. It's a little sound in Silver City. I'm not sure what the story is. The services, it could have been the February Cafe. I'm not sure. But as this moves forward, if the town is interested in participating in that, let the Southern County Historical Association know, we'll keep you appraised of what we find out. There's a lot of, there's a lot of links to this thing, because Fayetteville Street, as I understand it, is still controlled by the state. Do you have any? Majority of the should have said Chad Avenue, so everybody knows what I was talking about. Majority of the folks are on that, uh, on that same street. But the same issues are going to have to be dealt with in the town Pittsburgh, because the majority of the images are used to be sixty four or fifteen five or one. So the same issues will have to be dealt with. Uh, your, your packet that you got, or the two pieces of paper you got in front of you, are some of the images, uh, what the sign would look like, obviously, depending on what they had to get mounted on. Would, would change from one, uh, one application to another. But some of the issues that you might run into will be, will be addressed. Uh, but we would don't want to pursue them unless we know that the town's interested in doing it. So if you got any questions, I, I've got a good few that are answering, but if you have a question, I try to answer.
What do you think of a possible sign?
I have no idea. If you sign a small, so you submit a proposal. Uh, if that's this, just, this document just came out, when did I visit, were you done? Uh, the last two, the last two. So this is, this is in its infancy. The thing that, with the merit of, basically, Chad Avenue this morning. I said, we didn't inherit it all.
I, I found it, it's, 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 it's like you can, just stand with, with that. Especially since we're traveling local, in a long street community.
So neatly, uh, Ms. Jane coming, you coming, and, and new street routes. Last week, so all of this is tying into an act on community and our downtown, so yes, perfect, um, um, we really will need to move on to these projects forward. And again, uh, Commissioner Hasid, it asks, toss toss is always a factor. But like you said, it's in its infancy, and we will move forward and find out what it takes to make this happen, so she was appreciate it, uh, appreciate both of you coming with that information.
Thank you for bringing that.
Yes, sir, thank you. This will come in. Uh, is this? Okay.
This, this Christmas, I mean, it's a random for new business. Name is for, better for, yes, sir.
Okay, new business, and we do have a decent permission, but wanted to bring up, so we can stick in there. Right, we were like, go right here.
I would like to see us highly, our full-time, part-time people that have been with us, that got the last holiday tag those, and not necessarily the new ones now, based on that these people are loyal to us. And we did pay them for several holidays, and I've been approached by them. And, uh, it means a lot. You want to keep good people, and when you're good to them, they, they'll be loyal to you. John, off the top of your head, how much would that add to you?
Um, so a lot of our, uh, the part-time, they're not supposed to work on sixteen hours a week, so say they were two hours a day, four days a week, and they're on a Friday holiday. Are you saying that they ought to be paid two hours of holiday or eight hours of holiday?
Uh, right, sorry where they were.
Um.
Not eight hours, just their two, two hours.
Just thirteen, and I think there's four on their, um, uh, like, eleven to around, around a thousand.
Okay, so we don't have to be addressed this, so yeah, we need to make, uh, I mean, everybody's just a bit now, and it just be a continuation.
Two thousand. I just worry about, yes, only some people getting it because they don't know. There were a part time, part of the reason people work full-time is to get benefits. Make sure we incentivize people to give full dedication to their employment. One way to do that is to give them extra benefits. So based on that principle, I can't vote on that. That's why part-time employees, they, they don't get benefits in the private and public sector. And there's a reason for that, there's a, there's a business motive. So we start working harder, you give them a little bit of extra, like PTO insurance, stuff like that. That's, that's why I couldn't vote for that. It's only two thousand dollars, just based on that. We don't want to, they don't want that kind of worms, because everybody's going to want to jump on board. It's going to ruffle some feathers, or the part-time employees, they're going to, they're going to fix it. And it's just, it's going to, it's going to cause a, like a preferential, preferential issue, I think, with employment, I think.
With, if they were filing their nap, over more of a fire, or be considered permanent part-time, is that the cutoff? There should be some cutoff that
nice, that actually sounds good.
So that time was a thousand and one. So, that, so.
It started on the five hundred hour, so, uh, let's just work with the five hundred, let's just mentor to the board. But I need to hear, we need to hear from everybody, everybody, so we've got now.
Really, I think it's a good idea. I don't have a machine this time.
It's going to be, we're going to need to amend the personnel policy.
Okay.
No, how many, how many employees are we talking?
It's, uh, there's four, uh,
Obviously, four, it's two thousand dollars. How many employees are part-time or not permanent part-time?
Uh, when you, because of lifeguard and wall things, I'll eat. But that could be someone working fifteen hours a day.
So it's worth five hundred per person for unions.
Maybe, I don't know, shooting motion, based on the camera you set, I think we're calling it direction first, or exactly, that is, so. You have all the consensus to do that, I'm going to be in a what we have told you, like, I mean, uh, are you wanting to get this done now? Is the reason I'm asking all the questions, so we need to know where we stand tonight.
I'm asking, do we need a motion, because Alex said he could, he's not.
Also, two women, there's missing as well, maybe they want to put some in, put on, too. If we, if we don't go on tonight, and the holiday passes, can we do something retroactively?
Good for you. Be a little more, thank, right?
Sure.
Yes, yeah.
You can have a little retro.
Advice to anyone that has reservations about this, go talk to the permanent part-time team. I talk to them every time I go to the gym. And I dare say that you're going to be the same way if you have reservations against it.
That's part of the problem, is that we shouldn't be talking to employees, we shouldn't be talking to Jack and Kimberly. We shouldn't, we, we shouldn't talk with the employees, that's, that's not our priority. The system of government works, and don't talk to us, we
Exactly.
So, yeah, to say, to say, we can't enable policies that benefit people that come to us, the manager of the government. Special, to, to, to the constituents are, I'm not saying that you're soliciting. You should be, to listen to your concern. I'm not suggesting that the commission variables soliciting. I'm just, this is why we gave us a clip from this version of what it was and responsibilities were a couple months ago, because of stuff like this, guys. Well, I'm going to tell someone, come and talk to me, but she would, I'm sorry, I have to be involved to you.
Exactly, that's, that's not the way this is allowed.
So, so stand.
Yeah, well, because we're, we're operating on the premise that we're all in this together. Uh, and we have these conversations.
Uh, and we have these conversations with, from the manager on down to the person who claims to be.
You understand?
So, so how we've handled these holidays in the past, and if you want to consider this tonight. We've handled them on a, um, holiday by holiday basis. And I believe what Commissioner Ray is wanting to do is so we don't have to bring this up on a holiday by holiday basis. Is, um, to get a consensus, but again, we will have to change the personnel policy, set thresholds. That the, um, board, um, agrees with, so if we want to consider this July fourth commit holiday as a case by case basis tonight. And that gives, allows staff time to research and put thresholds and bring back them to you guys to vote on. And it's whole in its entirety, that's something.
Procedure looking correctly.
So, so ahead and do the case by case, as we set the precedent. Uh, then when you bring everything back, we'll take another look at it and vote then.
We're still looking at second holiday, we got June nineteenth and July fourth, two holidays coming up.
When we have to do. Yeah, so we're just do those two base by base. And then before we go past, July twenty-first, I believe it is. That will be the next board meeting, we'll go from there. If you have it ready by the end, we'll take another look at it and we'll, we'll make a decision then.
I have something else.
Yes.
I mean, we're on the.
Um, negative consequences from us paying, uh, part-time staff for holiday pay, is there anything? Any reason why we shouldn't?
We've already done it. We've done it, the last holiday and, and the attorney, I mean, no, to answer your question.
Okay. Any reason you see Jack?
No, I think it's a, a great decision how you approve your personal policy. And if we, if you want us to give you the list of permanent columns, we could probably put that together as well.
Well.
We just got all the information and.
Yeah.
For purpose, trying to do the two.
The two holidays.
The two.
Okay, yeah, I have another.
Yes.
Um. We talked about the four pretty more lights downtown, we talked about the lanterns, whatever, but, um. I've been in Pittsburgh several evenings and when I left, they have their trees decorated with lights that we used to have our trees in Silver City decorated with lights. And it was, I thought it was beautiful, it's inviting. I think we should consider doing something like that again. Uh, to make our downtown, to light up our downtown and make it more appealing to people.
Do you know if it would, she was just on special occasions.
Well, this had, this was a special occasion, I was taking lessons over there, so when I left, they were all.
They're lights on, never mind.
Okay, and it's very nice, and I don't think it would cost that much for the town.
Well, it's a lot of. I know it wouldn't cost a whole, uh, Christmas lights up through February, uh, Christmas. We should get some people to, um, send them, but, but the fast ones to put on inside, to, 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 you know, cost. We don't know as well.
That's something that I'd like to see, um, in for the town.
Is that in front of our downtown streetscape?
Lying with trees, probably not, that's definitely something to add, I know. So it sounds like they can bring back a proposal for what that would cost, and, and, and we could do that.
Okay, and adding to that, with our Christmas lights. I think we have beautiful Christmas lights, but when we go back and look at some of our pictures from the past, and I can remember this as a little girl. Where you had lights draped across the street, we talked about that, um, and there's several towns and cities that have that. I know we couldn't do it, uh, on Raleigh Street because of all the trucks that come through, we talked about that. And maybe not doing the host all the way down the other streets at Chatham Avenue. But maybe at where the old bank was and where the vacant lot was, had one string there at the end of the street in front of the, um.
You know, from the seven. Well, I also.
From his last store, one down there, where at the corner. Oh my gosh.
You said Raleigh and Chatham, right?
Yeah, you can't do it on Raleigh because of the trucks coming. It's well.
Yeah.
Chad.
Um, it's true.
Maybe do like, we don't have to start with the, doing the whole street done, but if we had four, the same thing you were talking about, they kinda. They move down like, like this and other, some of them have a wreath and. That, I mean, they had that, that's what they had in Silver City when I was young. And I know that there's not that many people that probably remember, I remember. You know, I live in.
The dance, uh, and that would be true, you got it. That the Christmas Federation Committee, Josh, uh, Miss Christie, whoever was working on that. Because we haven't actually, uh, put together a place, a new spot for the Christmas tree, the whole nine yards. So if you got to go with them and work with them, then that would be fully, um, that you're trying to, uh.
Find out how much it costs to have to go my back and.
I like, I appreciate that, who can.
You can like the downtown.
Yeah, so, man, you know, they're, they're, they have some good ideas, some work, so that's good. All right, this is your part.
All right, uh, first of all, you got the monthly time for the. Uh, finding further to get a course as for information to move. Uh, next, uh, the Monday's monthly calendar.
Yes.
Mentioning a couple of things, I mentioned the June teen holiday, it's Thursday, so the city hall will be closed. Um, June twenty-fifth is, uh, next Wednesday. We gotta invite today to the Silver area Chamber of Commerce, Chad McHorn Leadership Forum. Uh, if you're interested, that's gonna be at, uh, eight thirty. Let's. Next Wednesday, right? Yes. Uh, we, we honor those, we chat, we honor that, we'll get you a, a ticket, I think the mayor and myself will plan on going.
Yes.
And other staff as well. Uh, June twenty-eighth is the, uh, George Dark and Mary Newbie Pavilion Dedication.
Yes.
It's at Washington Avenue Park, um. Ten o'clock, I leave. Last two things I got there is we're gonna, I'm gonna give us a little quick update on, uh, transfer to our review. Uh, two things to talk about. If you want to, about how we're gonna let the public know about, if there's any new schedule changes, that's how we do that.
Uh, so we did just get the rescheduled. Everything's gonna be exactly the same except for Friday, if you were a Friday event, you're good, they split that day and added it to Tuesday and Thursday, so that. That section of town is gonna be.
So then the final collections.
Five, it'll be solely recycled.
Good.
Uh, businesses are gonna be, if you're Monday, Friday, it's gonna be Monday, Thursday.
Okay.
Um, Monday, Wednesday, stay, I mean, a Monday, Monday stay for the thirty.
Um, and we began collecting the new cans today at other rooms. So they're bringing them in, they're putting them together, and they're gonna be distributing them the next two weeks. And they're gonna have a sticker on the top of it, that's like everybody knows, in English and Spanish. Um, these will not be serviced until the first week of July.
Okay.
So you can use it. But it's gonna be sitting there for twenty-four, it's up to everybody who's gonna be dealing with that.
To the first.
Sir.
Some.
Uh, I'll reach out to J F M to try and get some information that we can share with the public about. How they're gonna, I'm assuming they're gonna collect the trash, collect the can and move on, but I have not gotten many information on that yet.
Of course, surprise, not surprised, um.
Yeah, uh, we just got a new schedule, so we'll be putting that online. Any questions?
Actually, I'm gonna discuss, um, is there anything early for you, any pickup schedule based on business demand? Big restaurants, busy on the weekends, getting picked up on Monday, stuff like that?
So I talked with the, I don't know, the weekends, it's gonna be during the week.
Like after the weekend, I, you know, five, there's something to be with your, you know, major volume will have never.
So what I'm really doing is just what makes the most sense for the truck to make his way through, like everything. Um, I talked with them this morning about that, so, so they'll reach out and let me know, then I can help them, they can kinda work it out. Um, maybe change it up a little bit, just do those little tweaks.
About some of the, the consistent stuff, thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, last thing, uh, yeah, I'm gonna mention about the. Your smell, taste smell, the road as, uh, the road plant folks in Korea has put together, we don't know, and that's what I want to share with the board. Like the little places here in campus with that, that, uh, they're still working on that. Uh, there isn't the. Um, I think that's all, can we do anything, Sharon?
No, I just, again, Jack's already reminded you, but we have the, um, uh, George Dark and Mary Newbie. Um, Pavilion Dedication coming up on June twenty-eighth, it'll be at ten AM. As we near closer to that, um, we will kind of let everyone know the itinerary for the morning, any sneakers, um. Thing or anything, and, uh, we'll put out, similar to how we did. Help me out, y'all. Larry Chee, um, we did. What are they called? The. Giving weddings in churches.
The, the, uh, food, banner sanctuaries or whatever, yeah.
It's like a list of events.
Yeah.
It's a lack of the bear words. Consider various. So anyway, we'll do that, folks, where we did. Um, and, uh, the family members have already began, um, sending out their invitations, if any of you have any invitations. Um, a list, please get those to me and Brianna, we'll send out a reminder, as we wanna get those mailed out, if you have anybody specifically you wanna invite, okay? Yes.
Um, I've got a mock calendar, came from June twenty-sixth, cause that's off.
It's an old calendar, dude.
I'm sorry?
It's your old calendar.
Yeah, I mean, I get, uh, uh. That was on.
That's a, that's a, I'm gonna need a minute.
We're between four and five.
Man, anyway, she'll explain.
Yeah, so that was next, so we are, June twenty-sixth is not gonna be the next community forum. We have our new communications, uh, person that's gonna start next Monday, and so that's something, she's gonna start spearheading. So she'll get with, um, Louis, along with Commissioner Hauser, um, to schedule a venue and a time that's. Late that.
Is that where, June, June twenty-sixth?
Probably not, no. And I'm thinking sometime early July, I mean, July, since we don't have a meeting until, um, July twenty-first.
No, we work so loose, like Sharon.
And then, uh, after that. Will immediately, um, start planning the at all which community forum as well.
Sure, that, the last one. Large.
So I could, should do. Um, similar, we'll do three, similar dates to, um. She can pick our, our votes that, that my show up. So we'll start now.
It's, we're gonna start working Monday, so. Last but not least, and then after we get done with the George Dark and Mary Newbie Dedication, then we need to immediately start working on the Nat Murray Dedication. Yeah, we're, um, thinking early fall, when fall all starts over at Bray Park. Um, so I have a plan, um, with the mayor and Jack. Over the next couple of days and try to pick out a couple of spots over there at the park, so we can get the consensus from the board. Um, about the placement of the. That's the first, so we gotta do a lot of different things, moving parts, everything going on, we're, we're sorry about the June twenty-sixth community forums.
Did we ever that, I'm dating for the dedication on the color, and then.
That's gonna be the end, the third week in August, um, we're, um, Judge Redbrand, I'm wondering what time on that Thursday, we have to.
Sure, so. We should, um. 打卡. Presentations and things. I think.
Yes, I'm thinking of a proclamation and probably a plaque, and I'll bring you some ideas, the closer we get, we can get those made fairly quickly.
Friends, uh, judges from some, soon. Um, as a compliment to the, the courtroom.
Like it's, yeah, it's like, you try to office, right? And, yeah, and then we're taking down the court ward, the double court boards with the glass, and we're giving those to finance office. And that's where all the George, the judge portraits will go. And we're putting casters on the, um, metal detector just so it can be moved out of the way easily for the court people.
Sounds good.
So, yeah. So our dates coming up, a lot of busy stuff.
All right, thank you so much, uh, any comments?
Wanna give a shout out to Mayor, thank you Liz for your efforts last week, um. I saw you and your crew out there, several, several people, thank you so much for trying to beautify our downtown landscape, just wanted to give a shout out. Um, and we're missing two board members, but I just wanna get, just bring this up, this was brought up by the person who was, um. Doing the, uh, board in downtown to possibly mirror what Pittsburgh's doing with the social district. I don't think it really put, let them in the town, it'd be easier than the force, the restaurants could have the stickers that they give to people. That basically lets some of those patrons are part of the social district, I think it'll help foot traffic in the downtown. I think it would be an overall net positive to help really increase foot traffic in downtown. And some breweries, uh, I just, I think it might be a good idea for us to go and get behind that. It's kind of becoming a lot more common in Greensboro, as in Pittsburgh, most of the really vibrant communities out of the downtown. You know, maybe when, when, um, Chris or we can talk about it in more detail. See what they think to, to get a real consensus, I was, you know, bring it up again. So, anyone on the quarry system, with the feedback, if they've got any feedback with those, or stickers? Stay with the.
They have them.
I say a line.
Somebody please emails.
Um, well, can say that we try, and then I just wanna highlight again with John talking about the twenty-seven cent, the true rate. I think a lot of people are still confused when you saw the budget and you see that revenue due for a twenty-seven cents. We don't let full tax levy from most states whatsoever, so when you see a number that low, it's really misleading why the municipal government is operating. At some scale that it shouldn't be operating at. We only get a very small fraction of the property taxes and. That twenty-seven cent neutral rate is based on full valuation and us taking the full allotment from the campsite. Which is not happening now due to a economic incentive agreement that was signed back in twenty-twenty-three. It's incremental for the next twenty years, so I just wanna make sure that the constituents are still with that in mind, so there's full transparency from the government.
Okay.
Anyone else? Shout out to our planning department, uh, community development planner Sarah Martin, our Silver City Development Organization Chair Kristy Brown. Uh, and anyone else who has been involved in this Main Street process, we had a visit last week. Uh, we, we'll be finding out soon, uh, but I think the visit one. Mission also was there, I was there, um, we had a very good conversation. Uh, and, uh, good tour of the town. Uh, so just keep your fingers crossed, we're confident that, uh, Main Street visit went well, but shout out to the town, town staff and, uh, and other. Uh, members of the Silver City Development Organization Board, uh, for the hard work they put in and the application. And following through with this process. It'll be, uh, a, a really great day for us to be a part of the Main Street communities.
It's.
Very impressive, I would say. They caught, on their way, they, they ate. It was. It was a good visit.
Yeah, but we, I hope that it was a fantastic day. Uh, man, they were really impressed, uh, with our community and there was a lot of knowledge, uh. That day about what is here and what has been here and what we're trying to accomplish, so yes. Thanks to everyone that was involved in that. Uh, I will say that I do appreciate. The fact that the board, some of the board members were available, I know we can't be available to everything, but. I want us to remember when we do this, oh, we also accepted responsibility. And so we need to, if at all possible, show up to as many events as we possibly can. On Saturday, they gave the no kings day. Uh, which was fantastic, there were, they said fifteen hundred people, I'll never believe that, I think it was closer to three thousand. Uh, they showed up in rows, young, rich. And, um. This is something that I think we not just backed the two of them, but we, Jack just mentioned the breakfast, uh. Coming up next week. And that's another chance to, uh. And that's another chance to, uh. Show up and tell people to be awesome. And so, uh, again, do your best. And I know some have jobs, but do your best to come out and support the efforts that we are trying to accomplish. And if there's nothing else, they don't deserve attention, can we get?
Most of them turn.